Okay, he said he's ready, so we're almost ready to start. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order our Monday, February 14th regular school board meeting. Happy Valentine's Day. If you'd please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge. Thank you very much. Before we start our regular meeting, I would like to recognize Mayor Michael Holland from the City of Eustis. He's in attendance. We're glad to have you here this evening. Superintendent, do we have any changes, additions, additions to the agenda? Board members, superintendent?
I have none.
Okay, all right. So we are on approval of the minutes.
Recommend approval of the minutes from the executive session for collective bargaining, January 18th, 2022, the regular school board meeting, January 24th, 2022, and the school board workshop, January 31st, 2022.
Okay, you guys have heard the superintendent?
Second.
Right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we have a proclamation recognizing Career and Technical Education Month in Florida. So I believe Dr. Felton, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy Valentine's Day. I do have the honor to read Career and Technical Education Month proclamation. So if you would just enjoy the read aloud. Whereas Career and Technical Education serves as the backbone of a strong, well-educated workforce, offers lifelong learning opportunities, and contributes to Florida's leadership in the national and international marketplace, and whereas increasing the availability to all Floridians of high-quality CTE programs and credentials has been a priority in this administration since the beginning, and whereas in 2019, this administration issued Executive Order 1931 to ensure high-quality CTE programs by commissioning an annual audit of all CTE programs resulting in the phase-out of over 500 programs that no longer aligned to meet industry demand, and whereas House Bill 1507 in 2021 provides a clear blueprint for a massive expansion of CTE and the integration of all workforce services in view of a more seamless and accessible experience for Floridians in need of training or upskilling, and whereas CTE provides Floridians with a school-to-career connection, helping students experience practical and meaningful applications of numerous skills, and whereas secondary schools in all 67 school districts, all 28 Florida colleges, and 48 technical colleges and centers offer high-quality CTE coursework, certifications, skill-based education, degrees, and co-curricular programs, and whereas more than 772,000 K-12 CTE students, representing the highest number of CTE students enrolled at the K-12 level in the state's history, more than 338,000 post-secondary CTE students, and 15,700 registered apprentices in Florida engage in this type of meaningful education, and whereas expanded access to high-quality apprenticeship programs by registering over 50 new programs since 2019, for a total of over 300 programs, and increasing the number of apprentices to over 15,500, up nearly 33% since 2018, and whereas more than 444,000 secondary students are enrolled in one of over 1,800 Registered Career and Professional Education, or CAPE, academies, and more than 15,100 Registered Career themed courses, and whereas in 2021, Florida's K-12 students earned over 168,000 industry certifications and over 59,000 digital tool certifications, up from 2018, and whereas $118 million in CARES Act dollars, including Governor's Emergency Education Relief Funds, were awarded to Florida's colleges and districts to increase enrollment and completion in high-quality in-demand CTE short-term credentialing programs, and whereas a $36 million investment in Florida's Rapid Credentialing Grant Program has allowed public post-secondary system institutions to award over 18,000 industry certifications or certificates to unemployed or underemployed COVID-19 impacted workers in less than a year, and whereas in 2021, the Florida College System conferred nearly 38,000 rapid credentials, an approximate 7% increase from 2018 and 2019, and whereas Florida has invested over $30 million from the Job Grant Growth Fund this fiscal year to expand training in critical logistics, commercial vehicle driving programs, nursing programs, and other high-demand professions to meet immediate supply chain and workforce needs. Now therefore, I, Ron DeSantis, or on behalf of him, Governor of the State of Florida, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing February 2022 as Career and Technical Education Month in Florida.
Thank you very much, Dr. Felton. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation about the proclamation?
I recommend the board adopt the proclamation recognizing Career and Technical Education Month in Florida.
Second.
All right, that's, we've had two seconds tonight. That's awesome. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 4-0. Thank you. Okay, we are at public input. Someone call your name. If you would just make your way up to the podium, you have three minutes. We'll start with Bob Johnson.
Good evening, thank you. I represent the Umatilla Quanis Club, and also I'm on the board of the State Science Fair, which I've been for many, many years. And first of all, as far as Quanis Club, we give to all the schools in Umatilla, plus the two schools in Paisley, excuse me, Altoona, and also in Paisley. In addition, I work very closely with the elementary school on FFA. Mark Wilson's done an outstanding job there, and some of the horticulturists at the Extension Office say it's probably the best of any of the schools in Lake County. That's an opinion. Secondly, science fairs. I've noticed a big drop-off in science fair participation since it went voluntary. I'm working with Sonia Blackstone a little bit, and Ms. Pyatt, to try to get some ideas how to improve the attendance. I know it's a lot of paperwork, can't do a thing about that. But Ms. Emily Logan has said she'd help with paperwork. I'm not sure whether Dustin Straight would or not, but he has an outstanding program. He sent 11 people to district, nine came back with places, four first, three second, and two third, and his program's outstanding. So when I meet with these, Ms. Pyatt's agreed to meet with me sometime, and we'll talk about some incentives, or money, whatever we can do. And in my opinion, at this point, we need a teacher that's specifically involved with a science fair such as Dustin Straight. Thank you. I'll be back, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much. I agree, wholeheartedly. Yeah, that's good work. Kathy Smith, our LCEA president. Important night tonight.
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and yes, Happy Valentine's Day. First of all, we just wanted to thank you again for our educators by adding the general fund dollars to the TSIA funds, so that experienced teachers could receive a reasonable raise instead of the $37, yes, I said $37, that the state would have provided in their funds because of the 80-20% split. And according to tonight, as you were saying, yes, we provided a Zoom earlier for a question and answer time, so that anybody could ask any questions that they wanted, members and non-members. We had, it was open to everybody. We had a few people on, and the voting began at that time. It will continue through Wednesday at 5:00 PM. We will have another Zoom at 5:15 on Wednesday afternoon, so that everybody can watch the electronic vote being tallied. Educators may want to check their junk email folder, because we are seeing that there may be, somebody told us on Facebook that they received, it came through junk emails, so we're going to work with Mr. Farnsworth and see what we can figure out with that. We continue to watch legislative bills in Tallahassee, and continue to organize around public school education bills, which include addressing the annual contract of teachers, testing and evaluation concerns, and experienced teacher salary compression. Please let me know if you have any questions, or if there are ways we can continue to collaborate for our educators and for our students. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Cronin, SEIU president.
Good evening, superintendent and board members. Happy Valentine's Day, first off. Very happy to see the retention bonus here on tonight's agenda to be approved. Employees are very anxious, very happy, and thankful. Monday's board workshop, I addressed this a little bit, about the conversion charter schools, and I thank you for asking, administration. I know that the two schools that were there Monday and that are here tonight have had ongoing conversations with their employees, was very happy about that. My question was with Round Lake, because Round Lake was staying for another year, and at that point, we had thought that employees had another year to make a decision, and I had heard rumor that they may not. So I did contact the principal. She told me they haven't made a decision yet. They've let them know by placement time, which, you know, to me, placement time is really a timely manner, you know? Placement means you will get put in any position that's available, and, you know, I just don't feel as though that was something that should be held off that long. So I just wanted to give yous an update of where I was at that time. Thank you.
Erin Porter. Welcome back, Mrs. Porter.
All right, thank you. Hello again. First, let me thank Dr. Carnegie for the inspiring Super Sunday video highlighting the potential impact of school counselors. I can see that you have an in-depth knowledge of what the students and schools need from us, and what we can accomplish when we use our skills. I hope that all of you have had time to talk to a school counselor, to see what other duties as assigned means to their daily work schedule and impact on children. My visit tonight is all about talking, filling my time with what school counselors do for a large amount of theirs. These things have nothing to do with COVID. They've been going on in our county since before I became a school counselor 13 years ago. I do have some suggestions for solving this problem, but that will be for another night. I'm going to start with a visual. These are some of the manuals that typical Lake County school counselors have in our offices, required by the various district departments to which we answer. So we've got two MTSS, which is in the Academic Services and Interventions. We have ELL, which is under federal programs. We have the Pupil Progression Plan, which is in college and career readiness. We have the Manual for Admissions and Placement, as well as the Functional Behavior Assessment and Behavior Intervention Plan, which is through ESC. We have 504, we have grief and loss, suicide awareness and prevention, let's see, we have absenteeism, we have crisis training, and we have families in transition, all through Student Services. And thank goodness, I do not personally have a manual for testing coordinating, which is through the Accountability and Assessment area. For not being administrators, school counselors seem to have their hand in every pot, and while some of these manuals make a good bit of sense to be the responsibility of the school counselor, multiple of them are a bit harder to justify, given our area of specialized training. To give you an idea of how these other duties cut into our work as school counselors, let's start at the beginning of a school year. While school counselors would love to spend pre-planning talking with teachers about the best way to connect with some of our more challenging students, those of us at the secondary level are often busy making schedule adjustments and creating schedules for newly enrolled students, as well as making sure all teachers have a copy of the 504 plans, and that we've gotten each of their signatures verifying their receipt. Come the first day of school, we would love to spend it out and about, building, being another smiling face, and building that crucial rapport with our new students and returning students. Instead, we're continuing with scheduling and making plans to do the IPT test through ESOL, which any new students whose enrollment paperwork suggests they may be eligible for ESOL must have within the first 15 days of school. For any students already in the ELL program, we begin scheduling their yearly plan update meetings, which must be done by October. We make sure to get our teachers' input form ahead of time, since as the school counselor, we have almost zero training on how to actually teach students who speak other languages, and don't forget to coordinate with a translator. Oh, and while we're juggling the ELL meetings, remember that annual and three-year reevaluations for our 504 students can start immediately with the beginning of school as well. Get the appropriate teacher input forms out multiple weeks ahead of time, same with the parent input consent, and meeting invitations being sent home after all of these meetings. Take time to send the things home to the teachers and the parents, upload it to the appropriate website, it's not sure what my master's training has to do with this paperwork. Oh, look at that, October, and I've already run out of time. Thank you.
Always a very good demonstration, though. We appreciate your time, Mrs. Porter. Okay, we are on to reports. We have our Educational Foundation report with Mrs. Carmen Colenbatt, the executive director. Wait, did he have a card? Did I miss him? Carmen, can I let Vance? I didn't, I didn't see it, Vance, I'm sorry. That was not intentional.
I tried to hide that one under the table.
Sorry, Mrs. Cunningham. Happy Valentine's Day, Vance. Vance Yoakam is our last.
Personally, I was going to come, Vance Yoakam, my hat today is as the Chair of your Internal Audit Committee, and I know that you have seen the two audit reports that are on the consent agenda already, so I won't bring those up, but what I want to do is say that we had a recent audit committee meeting, and Mark was there, and we tried for the third quarter in a row to develop a consensus for recommending a direction for the Internal Audit Committee, and whether we hire a person, another person, whether we hire a, whether we go out and spend money and hire outside consultants, because of all the things that are still on that list to be, that should be audited, in my opinion. And the, and so what I was going to say is that, Mark is going to comment in a minute here, but we're probably going to ask that it be on the next, like a workshop agenda to discuss some of these issues. We only had three of us at the meeting. One didn't show up, but because of sickness, the other one didn't tell us at all, and that's what happened more than once, okay? And as a consequence, I, and I think that if you're going to have an audit committee, you need to have people on the committee who have the skills and experience and the expertise to understand the issues that we're talking about. We're not, this isn't a political committee, it's a committee, a technical advisory committee. And so that's part of the discussion, is whether we get people on that committee that understand these issues and can communicate to you, or the other alternative is, you know, not, maybe just either, and I've said this before, just have them report to the superintendent, or to have the internal auditor just come in here and present his findings to you, because if you don't have people that understand the things that we're talking about for two hours in there, and be able to explain it to you, then I don't think you can make a good decision. So we're going to give you some information, and put it maybe on the agenda, and Mark will dictate that, and I'll talk to him about that, and we'll go from there, because hopefully, I mean, you have a lot of risks, you know? This is a very large organization, and I've worked in smaller ones, I've worked in much larger ones, and I've always had at least three people on the staff, and so I think that we just need to talk about that. And if you decide that, oh, you think everything's gone, because the superintendent's got great people, and they always tell me that there's nothing to look for, so as a consequence, you can make that decision, but I think that we need to at least talk about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Vance. I apologize again. All right. Carmen Colenbatt, you are up now.
Thank you, Chairman School Board, Superintendent, Happy Valentine's Day. Apple Mart has had 706 teacher visits, and we've distributed $53,000 worth of supplies to our teachers. We received $30,000 from a Universal Foundation grant, and those funds are earmarked for our students, our families in transition. We've been writing checks so far to cover rent, to cover utility bills, that type of thing, so it's really truly going in to the family's hands. The board funded $31,000 for our culinary departments in four high schools last month for their outstanding work at the Renaissance Fair, and I think at the last school board meeting, I was proud to say that they had cooked $124,000 worth of turkey legs. So we were, we were $31,000 proud of them. And in addition to that, another $29,000 was given out to the various classroom grants that applied for us last month. We received 13 art grants, which were going to the Visiting Committee for Funding this month. We're collaborating with the Malls Festival of Trees at Taverri's Arts Organization, and we have matching funds from an anonymous donor. Our scholarship platform has had 153 students starting an application for the $75,000 allocated to scholarships for the class of 2022, and that deadline is March the 24th. Jessica Woods from Taverri's Middle School was named the 2023 Lake County Teacher of the Year. Her application was submitted last Friday to the state, and the event was attended by 350 people, presented by Duke Energy, Ernie Morris Enterprises, and Jenkins Auto Group. The tapping for our school-related employees and our rookie teachers is going to be happening really, really soon, and the 45 rookie teachers in 36 school-related will be honored at a reception on March the 9th. The event is presented by Insight Credit Union, and sponsors include Graff Holding, Ernie Morris, Hirth Jones, and Dragon Financial. Last Saturday, we held the county-wide robotic scrimmage. We had 19 teams attend the event at Taverri's Middle School, and it was an exciting day, and it's for elementary and middle high school, so it was a great turnout and a good experience for our kids. The skeet shoot is being held on February the 25th, and it is sold out. Proceeds from this event are 100% earmarked for the Scott Strong Memorial Scholarship Fund. Ladies for Education will be held on Friday, April the 8th, at Continental Country Club, and this is our kind of infamous tournament for women that do not play golf. We will be calculating the top 3% of our graduating class right after spring break. These students will receive a gift from the foundation, and Style Magazine is going to be donating a double-page spread, so that we can put their photos in and congratulate the great achievements that this top 3% has had. We were notified this week that the Lady of the Lakes Renaissance Fair won the first place in a second pick, which is a national award by the Renaissance Fair Award Organization. Take Stock in Children had a nice package come in the mail today. There were two awards, since we weren't in attendance in Tallahassee. One of them was a luminary award, which means they scored not an A, but an A++ with the state for the highest level that you can get at 100 points. They have also received 44 qualified applications for inducting into the program this spring. They're being scored by judges, and then interviews will take place in early April. 44 sounds great, but we were a little disappointed, because we have 45 scholarships. So we're hoping to maybe find some kids that can get them in on time. The Take Stock in Children Chili Cook-Off was February the 2nd. Last year, we took home best chili trophy. This year, we left with our tails between our legs and no trophy, and it was fun, but it was cold. The Spelling Bee is this Thursday. We have 15 corporate teams competing, and public supermarket charities and Bank of America are the presenting sponsors. Our executive board meets this Wednesday, and the full board meets on February the 23rd at noon. Are there any questions?
Wow. They're all busy.
Vance, they gave me seven minutes.
Thank you, very much. Yes, we appreciate all you do. Mr. Johnson? Nothing tonight? All right, Superintendent, we're on the consent agenda.
Recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 10.08.
So moved.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed, thank you very much. That's a 4-0. All right, Superintendent, we're on our discussion of our charter renewal applications.
So last Monday, the board had a chance to review three charter renewal applications, and all three of those schools are with us this evening, their administration and their board, so welcome. It's great to have you all here tonight. I am going to be making a recommendation on these, and I was told that I need to do them each separately. So I will start with my recommendation on the first one, followed by any discussion, and we have folks here tonight, if y'all have any questions at all, and would like to hear from any of them. I know you had a chance on Monday to ask some questions, but certainly if there are any others, they're here tonight, so. My first recommendation for 11.01 is approval of the charter school renewal application for Meniala Charter School.
That's the recommendation? I'll move. Second? Is there any discussion? None, saying none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. My next recommendation is approval of the charter renewal application for Spring Creek Charter.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and my final recommendation is approval of the charter renewal application for Lea Academy.
Did you have an approval, did you have a year? Did you have an amount of time for that application renewal?
That application, my understanding is that that will come up when we actually do the contract, is that right, Ms. Summerlin? That we'll, we'll make that decision at that time? Is that correct?
Which decision? We were saying, amount of time? Was that right? Okay, so we'll do that at a separate time?
Correct.
Just the approval of the charter application?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Okay. You guys have heard the superintendent's recommendation? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, 4-0. You good? All right, we are on the superintendent's report. Hold on one second. Thank you, guys, all for being here. I know you guys have all shown up tonight for that, so we appreciate you being here and the discussion that was provided last week, and I know that we changed some things up, and so I'm glad we got everybody taken care of this week, and we can move on to the other application processes. So thank you all for the work you do for Lake County children. Thank you, Superintendent. Your report.
All right, already on reports. First of all, there was one letter of condolence sent to the family of Nancy Beregian. If y'all remember, Ms. Nancy, she was our front office receptionist for a number of years, and she passed away recently, and so I know, we've missed her since she retired, and so condolences were sent to her family. Just a couple of things, I want to extend my congratulations to Jessica Woods, our 2023 Teacher of the Year as well, that Carmen already highlighted this evening. Also, I just wanted to make sure that, that I did mention that I did have a chance to talk to Ms. Porter. I know we've seen her the past couple of meetings prior to this meeting. She is actually one of nine guidance counselors who serve as representatives on our district-wide Guidance Counselor Committee, along with Ms. Frances Sellis and her team, and one of the things that they are working on is looking at the structures and the responsibilities of our guidance counselors. They're going to be bringing to us some, some possible changes and recommendations, and so I let her know that we, we hear her, and that this is actually something that Ms. Sellis has been working on for a while, and looking at some other models from other districts, and kind of how do we ensure that all of the, all the state and federal requirements are being met, while getting our guidance counselors more time to actually do what their calling their heart and passion is, which is working more closely with our students? So we, we are working on that, and I want to make sure that the board was aware of that. And did I have anything else this evening? No, and I just want to thank our charter schools for all your hard work. I know your applications took a lot of work. I know some of them were hundreds and hundreds of pages. It gave us a good, a good look into the work that you do every day for our kids, and we just want to say thank you for that, and looking, continuing to work alongside you on behalf of our kids.
And while she's at that, I'm literally sitting out here looking at everybody, and Ms. Cobb is here too, from the Eustis City Commission, so I apologize that I didn't recognize you earlier. Thank you for being here and for serving on the board, both of you, so we appreciate that. Mrs. Cunningham?
It's been a busy two weeks. First of all, congratulations to our Lake County Teacher of the Year, Ms. Woods. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to all three charters that had your charters renewed today, tonight. It is a pleasure for us to work alongside you and create good learning experiences for students throughout Lake County. So please know that we appreciate the valuable service that you provide. Last week, I had the opportunity to serve as a judge for the Tropicana Speech Contest at Triangle Elementary. I can tell you, we have some young people that are going to be wonderful public speakers, and I had the pleasure of serving with Ms. Luke and Mr. Dodd at the Science Fair, the District Science Fair this past week. I saw some amazing projects, and in that evening, we got to go back and see the students that placed. It would do your heart good to see the quality of work that those students had, and I'm just happy that they were able to do that. And that's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Dr. Burns? Dr. Burns?
When I started on this board in 2016, it was really important to me that our board worked very nonpartisan and that we worked really well together as a board, and I think we have, actually. However, I have decided that the general political discourse and the divisiveness is just too much for me to really continue in my seat at this point. So I've decided, after, what I'm trying to do is to do this in the most respectful way possible for the district, because I do recognize the hard work that the district and the community and, and this board has, has worked on. And so I arranged with, I spoke with our supervisor election, Senator Hayes, and he and I, we both agree that it would be best if I put this, my seat, back to the people. And so to do that, I'm going to resign effective May 1st. And therefore, that will automatically trigger a general election, just as if I hadn't never run, I guess. You know, as if it was a regular election. And, and so I think that would be the very best thing for the people of Lake County. And at this point, I'm just going to step back from all this divisiveness and really be able to focus on my family. And I just wanted to be able to make that announcement to you guys, so. Thank you. That's all I have.
Don't render myself speechless very much, but you've done that, so I wish I was prepared with something to say, other than I understand where you're coming from. I think everybody that's an elected official right now is feeling somewhat of that pressure and that hatefulness. And we've certainly seen our share of ugly, ugliness out here, so. We appreciate your honesty in coming forward, and we'll have more to say when we can digest the.
Yeah, it is.
Mr. Dodd, you go.
Well, I am, I am thrilled that you stepped in with something, because as, as you said that, I thought, okay, I, I don't know how to be the one with the first words following, following that. But yeah, I guess after I have a chance to digest that, maybe, maybe some, some bit of insight. But I, I think you've brought a, a great perspective to this board, and, and you know, that's, that's what's made us work so well, is this diversity of opinions and backgrounds and experiences. And, and so I think, you know, we'll certainly be remiss not having that. And it's, you know, well, five of us have maybe not agreed on everything every time, you know? That's, there's some beauty in that, you know? Wish you the best.
Thank you.
Luckily, I wrote down some other comments, because I, I'm sure I would have been thrown entirely for a loop here. And, and that is, once again, I'd like to offer my congratulations as well to our Teacher of the Year. But, but I'd also like to throw some thanks out there to the Ed Foundation, because I, I know in other districts, the celebration could just be as simple as punching cookies. And the fact that we get, you know, all of our Teachers of the Year in a room to celebrate them is, is, I think, very meaningful. And I'm just so thrilled and proud to be part of a county that does that, that honors all of those folks. I thought it was very appropriate timing for the CTE proclamation, because I had a chance to attend the, the dry-in at the Habitat for the Community House a couple of weeks ago in Leesburg and see the work that their Construction Academy students are working, are doing on that house. And I thought, as I talked to those students, I thought, this is the most incredible thing. And I just remember so many times sitting back in school going, when am I ever going to use this again? Why do I need to know this formula? I could just look it up. But, but to see that we are providing experiences for these kids that are relevant and applicable to, applicable to their, to their career path. And it, you can tell that they're very excited. And, and when the finished product is a house, I mean, my goodness, who can't be excited about that? Also had a great time judging Science Fair, although it was, it was challenging. Oh, my gosh. You know, as, when I was there on middle school and high school night, and I think I heard, I don't remember if it was Dr. Feltna or Ms. Cockcroft, say that they were happy that they didn't have to judge. I think it was Ms. Cockcroft. I, I thought, oh, man, that's going to be me on the elementary day. And sure enough, it was, it was hard. These kids have put so much thought into their, their projects and, and so much work. And it's, it's really great to see that product. And, and thank you for making that the subject of Super Sunday, because it gave a, a great spotlight on, and also the, the component of the interviewing skills that these kids embark on as they, as they present their projects. Very well done. Kind of echoed the, the thoughts earlier about the voluntary versus, you know, participation on that. I did kind of notice that there were a number of schools that had a lot of participation, and then other schools just seemed to really not even be represented at all. And I, I thought, you know, I, I'm not sure if that's a, a school decision or if that was just, it just happened to be that every kid in the school didn't want to participate. But that, that really is a great opportunity for kids, and I'm sure there's somebody in that school missing out if this, if the school, for whatever reason, is choosing not to participate. And so I, I'd really like to look more at why that is. And, and you know, I know that, you know, the, the stipend that we give for our coordinators is only so much for how much work goes into that. And so I don't know, maybe you have a bunch of folks not really chomping at the bit to be that coordinator. But I, I just, I just wonder about the opportunities that our kids who are not participating are missing out on. And then finally, Mr. Yocum had, was here tonight to talk a little bit about the Audit Committee. And I suggested to him that we perhaps have some lengthier discussion on a, on a workshop-type of agenda. As you might recall, in the past, we had kind of talked about the future of the Audit Department. We know that Mr. Mock has a retirement in a couple of years. And, and so if we're looking at some sort of transitionary period, or if there is, you know, where he gets the opportunity to work with the new person, or if, or if we're expanding the Audit Department, or outsourcing, or whatever that looks like. And we lobbed it back to the, to the Audit Committee to have some more talk on. And the three of them were not able, still not able to come to a consensus. I think there's this hesitation there that they really want the board to be the driver on that. So, so I think that's really going to have to come back to us to talk about. And then, and then just the idea that, you know, this committee, granted it's volunteers, but when you have two folks absent, you know, and you're kind of waiting to get a quorum, I, I can see their frustration in trying to, to really undertake some pretty complicated work. And so I think Vance and I have a few ideas we'd like to kind of talk about, about maybe how to maybe create a, a pool of people who are interested in this. We know that the counties and the cities often have advertised their committees, and, you know, they collect applications. And just as an opening comes up, then the board member could, you know, pull those applications and say, ah, John Smith is interested, you know? But I, I guess, you know, we can certainly save all that talk for a workshop setting, but just wanted to echo his thoughts that there's some conversations we need to have.
I think that conversation's been coming for like the last year, it feels like. So it'd be nice to get some consensus and maybe a workshop and then a vote, so we can move forward. That'd be nice?
That would be fantastic.
Okay. And we're, we're going to come back to what you announced. We'll have a little bit of time to digest it, but I'm just saying, I don't, I don't want to overlook the heaviness of that, that suggestion, Dr. Burns, but we appreciate your service so far on this board, and we know you have service to finish, so. I also wrote down Science Fair, and I agree thoroughly with Bob, and I know that there's plenty, I don't know if he's here anymore. There's plenty of people out there in the community. I know our Kwanis group has always been supportive in Umatilla. And I do feel like, even had my own children go through Science Fair for so many years, but it seems like once they get to high school, they don't do it anymore. And I know that they become so much more involved in all of the other things, but certainly would be nice to look at that. So I'm 100% in agreement, maybe we could look at that and see, because there's so many things they learn. And when you stand in front of those kids and listen to them, it is, I mean, I'm telling you guys, it's the most inspiring thing. I literally flew to Tennessee last week to do some model lessons in a classroom. And I had a whole lesson planned on Tuesday, flew out Tuesday evening, and I stood in front of one of those kids at the Science Fair, and they were talking about making loop-de-loop for a marble and what angle they would have to position their, their roller coaster to get the marble to go all the way through it. And I was like, why would I not have these kids measuring? That was the silliest thing ever. I changed my entire lesson plan and went to Tennessee with something inspired by a third grader. So, so just putting that out there, that they're so inspirational, and they are, there's so many problem solving. We want kids to be readers, writers, thinkers, talkers, and this, it's just the best thing in the world to see. So it's always an enjoyable evening. I'm sorry I missed the award ceremony, but I'm glad I got to judge with the two of you, so. Congratulations to Jessica Wood. And we had several girls represent their schools at the state weightlifting competition this weekend. And I'm going to tell you, if you've never seen that, that's another thing that's super, super exciting. We had several top 10 finishers. We had, we had several freshmen that stood on the podium next to girls and lift, lifted weights that are, I mean, I can't even imagine. Makes me a little bit scared to be, to, when my teenage daughter sasses me, that I, maybe I should, because, because I've seen her lift now. So congratulations to Umatilla, who had some, some students present, and to Eustace High School that has some girls present. And we've got a lot of district matches going on with basketball and stuff too, so we're excited. We wish everybody luck for that, so. With that being said, it's Valentine's Day, right? So, meeting adjourned?
Yeah.
Okay.